It's 6:30. I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, individual liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have any announcements, awards, or special recognition?
Yes, Mayor, actually I do. I'd like to take a second to recognize Assistant City Manager Justin Strickland, who was recently selected by Georgia Forward as one of forty-five promising professionals to serve in the Young Game Changers Program. The Young Game Changers Program is a unique leadership action program hosted by Georgia Forward, a nonprofit organization administered by the Georgia Municipal Association. The Young Game Changers brings professionals from across the state to work on persistent challenges of the Georgia community. And Justin will be attending this this year, and we wish him all the best, and thank you for your continued work with the city, Justin.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We have two speakers signed up. First person signed up is Suzanne Brown.
Suzanne Brown, I live in Crescent Oak. In 2022, the Fayette County Elections Department controlled and conducted our municipal election. The election was supposed to cost between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars. It cost us a hundred and thirty-three-plus thousand dollars. Cities all over Georgia are opting to run their own elections. Many are ditching the voting machines and choosing the handcount paper ballots. It's cheaper. We can too. We need a joint council and citizen committee to do a feasibility study. I'm available. If we can't get organized to do it ourselves this year, there are critical issues to reach, research, and negotiate before signing the IGA. Municipalities can determine how many polling locations they use, how many days of early voting you have, the hours the polls are open for early voting, how much to pay the workers, and whether to use paper ballots. There is no requirement to have any early voting outside of Peachtree City. On Election Day, don't vote in the precincts, just use the library. You have the authority to do that. Why was it over a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars? They paid early voting workers sixteen dollars an hour instead of the flat rate of a hundred and thirty dollars that workers earn on Election Day. You don't have to pay them the same rate that the state does, negotiate it. And if you don't, if you just use the library, you only need a handful of election workers. Their estimate said that they would have two workers processing absentee ballots in November and two in December. They charged you for three workers, and then added overtime pay too. So that ended up to eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars for three staff times three weeks in November and three weeks in December to mail, process, and process a hundred and twenty-four absentee ballots in November and only twenty-eight in December. That's just wrong. Every item in the 2023 estimate should be scrutinized and negotiated. Georgia election laws give us the power to run our own election. When they control it and ran it, they, we saw long lines, people leaving without voting, and people having to vote in two polls on Election Day. We can tell them when, where, and how to conduct the election. It's our election, not theirs. We need to run it ourselves.
Next person sign up to speak is Carolyn Froh.
Lynn Froh, Peachtree City. I have pages and pages of notes taken during my term as a poll watcher for Peachtree City. I served at the Peachtree City Library in Camp Creek and Wingate. I spent countless hours door-knocking, talking, stumping for and working for canvassing for some good, strong candidates. The ineptitude, crass indifference, and blatant "I don't care" attitude from the Fayette County Election Board was appalling. From day one, I spoke to Hill, Mr. Hill, and the person in charge about inadequate signage for the Peachtree City voters, scanners not working, long lines, training on one computer while you had a line of people that waited from the second line to vote in the Peachtree City municipal lot, and inadequate power to machines used for the same system electrical as the library, were told that it would improve after five o'clock when the library went offline. I asked, why do we not have more than one computer for the municipal election? And I was told they asked for more but was denied by Hill, wasn't available. Why not proper signage? It took a week for a sign to appear over the door that said, Peachtree City. If you want to vote for Peachtree City, then you have to go over to this room. This whole election was fraught with inadequate personnel, equipment, and yes, supervision of the process. Many times, there were people that were out there talking to, assisting the workers, and filling out voter absentee ballot papers when they were supposed to just be poll watching. It was, it was reported, and nothing was done. The rules and the laws of our voting system
Thank you for your comment.
was consistently broken and disregarded. Thank you. I hope you take this to end to consideration.
Thank you. Any others?
There are no more speeches.
Agenda changes?
Yes. Yes, Mayor. Mayor, I have an agenda change. I'd like to take out, I'd like to make a motion to take out the item number one under consent agenda for some further discussions.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
What are we taking it out for?
Just further discussions on that.
On the signage?
On the On the thirty thousand five, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars for geotechnical investigation.
Correct. It needs to be voted on, Phil. It's a motion and a second.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to take that out of consent so that we can address it specifically. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. No. Tell me the ayes. Raise your hand, the ayes. That would be you. Raise your hand.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Raise your hand for the noes.
I thought you were looking for a comment. I'm like, what?
No, I'm not. The noes carry, so we'll keep that in consent. Minutes, January eighteenth, 2023.
Wait, we're going to take it out of consent?
Oh, you're taking it out of consent?
He wanted to take it out of consent.
And it was defeated or?
Correct. It was defeated on a two-to-three vote.
Excuse me. I think, I think we misheard Councilman Preborn. That's why.
I'm sorry. So I voted to take it out of consent.
I know you did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we had two to take it out of consent, and three said no.
You said no.
So it is in consent. It will stay in consent.
Okay.
I didn't know which way Frank voted.
That was one.
Frank, can you clarify your vote?
I voted no, not to take it out of consent.
Point of order, Mayor, if you second the motion, you're required to vote in favor of it.
No, that's not true.
Am I sure? Okay. I'm sorry. My error.
That's okay. That's a very good question. Do we have any questions? We have voted that we will not remove it from consent.
Okay.
All right. Minutes. January eighteenth, 2023, special call workshop minutes. January nineteenth, 2023, regular meeting minutes. January nineteenth, 2023, executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the January eighteenth, 2023, special call workshop minutes, the January nineteenth, 2023, regular meeting minutes, and the January nineteenth, 2023, executive session minutes.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda items number one, design of state route fifty-four seventy-four upgrades. Number two, award purchase of storage replacement, production and backup to CPAC technologies. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that we approve consent agenda items one and two.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Eight, old agenda items, one twenty-three oh four, acceptance of the GMC proposal for professional services for the Unified Development Ordinance.
Mayor, we have a presentation for council this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Unified Development Ordinance, as mentioned at our last meeting, is a, a user or a more user-friendly document that compiles all the various development ordinances from, throughout, that are sprinkled throughout our code. The consultant that is contracted, that you have reviewing tonight, will help us identify outdated standards, identify conflicts that may exist in the ordinance, and they will also manage the public participation plan or public participation process. There will be no changes made to the ordinance without city council review and approval. Here's the general process. It's about a twelve-to-eighteen-month process. The first phase is a data collection phase, in which there's a kickoff meeting, a stakeholder interviews held by the consultant, and a steering committee, which is appointed by the city council and will be onboarded by the consulting team. The second phase is where the, we have various drafts. This is where they bring up forward those identified conflicts and issues. There will be two public workshops during that phase. And then the third phase is the adoption phase, which is the technical required phase for any kind of changes to the zoning ordinance required by the state, in which there will be two public hearings, including the one held by the Planning Commission and one held by the city council. Here's a network. There is a network of public participation framework here, shown on this map, on this slide. There will be a steering committee, again, appointed by the council. They will help us guide throughout the process. There will be planning commission participation throughout. They are an integral part of the development process, and so it's important that they're an integral part of this planning process. There will be public workshops, in which the public will have an opportunity to view everything and make their preferences known. And again, there will be a planning commission public hearing and a city council public hearing, all of which will not, will come to you at the end. There will be no changes made to the document without city council approval. Staff is requesting that the staff be able to proceed with signing the contract so that we can kick off this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, council? This has been on the agenda before.
I have no questions.
This is something that we already started, though. Is it? Or is it something different from months ago? Or what was, I thought we had somebody going through cleaning stuff up already. No?
Well, internally, staff has started compiling the many, many ordinances in order to help when the consultant gets onboarded for us to be a little legwork ahead of time. But this is not officially started. No, sir. We can't start until this contract is signed.
I've got some comments.
I have one more question. If you could put up the, the flow chart and it said twelve to eighteen months, I just think the one before that, or the one that's a circular.
There you go.
Yeah. So what direction, just, I mean, if you
Oh, no, this was just to show that there's a, a network or of, of public participation. There are going to be many ayes on this. There's not going to be any changes that are made without everybody, including, you see, the stop top. There's the steering committee, the planning commission, public. Consultant's going to be working on it, city staff, and then, of course, city council in the center. Every, there's going to be many touch points that folks can have an opportunity to look and see what's being done.
Okay. Yeah, I know. I mean, from experience up here, we have a lot of duplicate, I'll call them, issues that, yeah, I mean, this is something that I know we had talked about years ago. I thought we had already, I guess, like you said, staff was doing some internal stuff.
We've been doing it piecemeal, and this is going to help us do it comprehensively.
Get to the finish line?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In last month's meeting, we were told that it was going to be an organization of, of ordinances only. Now, this, this time this month, we now see that there's going to be minor changes and stuff, and maybe we need to get a little more clarification that there's going to be minor changes, or is it just everything is going to be brought to the city council for a vote? Can I get maybe a clarification on that?
Yeah, certainly. So the process in which Robin has identified here is going to take all of those disparate documents that we had talked about previously, and it's going to pull them into a concise document for us to review. It's also going to take into consideration anything that's in conflict. So for something that we may have duplicates of, or something that no longer exists or no longer applies, it's also going to bring that into question as well. They're going to take a look at all of that. In addition, this was on the council agenda last meeting, and it was pushed to this meeting because council had asked staff to provide some additional work for the contractor and consultant to do for us. So since we have gone back out and questioned the contractor, and they came back and said that they could do the additional work within the scope of the budget for us, and that additional work was some additional cleanup work of some of the design and architectural aspects that are currently in the city ordinances right now. So it's going to take a look at all of that, and the key is it's going to come back, and once it goes through all of those sets of eyes up there, ultimately, to come back for a council decision. So they'll make recommendations on where things are inconsistent and/or antiquated, and they'll bring that entire document back to council after it's been cleansed, if you will, by those committees and boards, and some of those boards in which the council actually appoints members to, for your approval and/or adoption, if you, if you see necessary.
Thank you very much. That was a good explanation. I do have one final follow-up question. And basically, I'd love to see this come out in a form or format like we see track changes when you're going through documents and you make a change and it pops up red, and then puts a little sidebar on what you've done and who's done it. Some, all the changes that we're going to be seeing, because I'm sure we've got thousands of pages of this, I'd love to either see some type of track changes, which I'm sure you're all aware of, but more importantly, maybe we could have a list of some things that are like, here's all the typos we found. Those are easy to take care of. Here's some ones that are just minor changes of understanding. Then you get into the ones that are really the clarification and some serious changes. Is there any way we can get the form and format in something along that line? It'll be easier for us to track it.
So I, I don't see an issue with that request, you know, at first glance. However, I'm not familiar with the process in which the organization is going to grab all that information and go through it. So if there's an opportunity for us to get a list of tracked changes, we can certainly ask that question.
That's typically how we've seen ordinance changes before.
Yeah, I mean, initially, both the land development ordinance and the zoning ordinance have been put together in a single Word document. So tracking the changes shouldn't be any issue at all.
Appreciate that.
I do have
Thank you.
You know, I, I believe other council members have commented on this, but I've been tracking this for a long time. As you know, from the planning commission days, where I was there for eleven years, I know a lot about the design standards. And, you know, from initial, from my initial remembrance of what we were going to do, we were going to take a look at the design standards for the three different standards that we had, the Wilkshire Village, Lexington Village, and the overlay district up in, up in the avenue. And I initially thought, and we had talked about this, that we were going to look at, and we've asked before, even on the planning commission, that we don't need all those. Wilkshire's built out. Lexington's got maybe one or two areas. There's three different standards there. And of course, the avenue, the overlay district, we know that the paint doesn't even exist anymore. That when, when the TACOMAC wanted to go ahead and paint their, their building, and they did, when we went up there, we didn't even, they couldn't even paint, go back to the old standards because the paint doesn't exist. So I think it's a great idea that we were going to go ahead, and initially, we were going to find out where there were changes and what we could do to identify them. Fine. I was asking, that's not enough. We need to do away with those standards and come up with just one standard for the city and one for the overlay district. Now you've thrown in architectural standards. I have a grave concern over architectural standards just because of past history where we were building a lot of schools for Fulton County. And every time I went to these new schools, excuse me, these new cities, Johns Creek and Sandy Springs and so on, we were never had a problem with their design standards, but when we went to their architectural boards, and you've heard this before, we always had problems with their designs, their architectural standards. I think that the citizens of Peachtree City ought to be able to decide, homeowners. I mean, we don't want to see somebody, and this is an extreme case, and I don't believe we're going to do this, but, you know, everybody knows that Helen, Georgia, decided that they wanted to turn their village into a Bavarian village. So they put standards in that everybody had to live with that Bavarian theme. We're not going to do that in Peachtree City, I know. But, you know, if people like Jim Royal wanted to put this brick building up, and if it's not in the design, the architectural standards, that brick was acceptable, and we've looked at the columns for the, the Highway fifty-four signage, and we, we thought, as Phil brought up, there was different things that we looked at. Maybe, maybe something like split block or that pressed concrete would be better. You know, we ought to have that option. So I don't think we ought to really get into designs, architectural standards. After I went ahead and got a copy of the current design, excuse me, the current ordinance on what the commercial and industrial building design has
Frank, I think you're way, way, way ahead. I mean, they've got to bring in stuff.
Just hear me out, Phil. I'll, I'll be quiet, quick. There's a lot of good things that are in here. And there are actual architectural standards in there, as you pointed out to me when we talked. And there's things like, you know, eighty percent arc, glass and fifty percent glass on different sides of the building, which are architectural standards. And there's other different architectural standards that aren't good. There's blank walls that shouldn't be, you know, that, on, on certain streets that be seen that shouldn't be prohibited, that should be prohibited, and different things that, so architectural standards are, in fact, part of our package. So I'm, I've always been a proponent of doing what we were going to be doing, and I do agree that the UDO is something good. What, what I don't like at this current point is that I think that, you know, that old adage of you, you want to have a committee that looks at the design of an elephant that comes out looking like a camel. I, I just think that we ought to start a little smaller. Let's start with what the, what the architectural engineering firm comes up with, and then maybe at least let the ci, at least let the council take a quick look at that before we kick off and start having staff and planning commission, and especially the steering committee, and everybody get involved with that, because, yes, it comes back to us, but then if we make changes, we're going to irritate some of the citizens that they thought it was something good. So I'd like to maybe suggest that maybe there's an intermediate step, that once they get to where they are, we can at least have maybe a preliminary look at what they came up with, not making changes, but at least say, okay, we're pretty much onboarded with that. Let's press on and go for the full thing. So that's the only suggestion I would like to see. If you would consider just maybe an intermediate step before we jump right into the full-blown proposal that you have. Other than that, I support this proposal.
Any other comments, council? Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve old agenda item oh-one twenty-three oh-four, acceptance, acceptance of the GMC proposal for professional services for the Unified Development Ordinance.
And it's in
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just, would you consider my proposal of making an intermediate step?
Yeah, so, we can talk
Yes, absolutely.
So what we did years ago with the Sploss Committee is that we appointed each guy, appointed somebody that had a member on it, and we participated. And as, as all that was going through, would that be similar? Like, when you say, uh, public input, I mean, we're public.
Can I ask a simple question? Does all of council generally concur with what Mr. Dastadia was suggesting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I think staff has heard that, whether it's part of the motion or not, that the preliminary document needs to come to council before it kicks off into the steering committee and so forth.
All right.
Unless, I mean, if Mr. Dastadia wants to be part of the motion, we can ask, Mr. Preborn made the original motion, see if he'll amend it. But my intention purposes, I was pretty clear that that's what council wants us to do.
Certainly.
All right.
All right.
Would you accept that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll take, we'll take that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor
Wait, wait, Mike never seconded the amended motion.
I don't think we
I would, I would second it, then.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Phil.
Yeah. Let's see. New agenda item two twenty-three oh one, resolution of support Tyrone property annexation by General Assembly.
Counsel, we discussed this at the workshop on January the eighteenth. This is the piece of property off of McDuff, McDuff Parkway that is technically landlocked from the town of Tyrone. It's currently in the municipal limits of the town of Tyrone. The property owner has asked for the property to be de-annexed from Tyrone and annexed into Peachtree City. That has to go through the General Assembly. Before you tonight, you have resolution number zero-two zero-two-two zero-two-three dash NAO one, which would allow that process to move forward and for us to contact the local delegation. There's a proposed bill. Of course, it will have to go through legislative council before anything can be introduced. And while we're hopeful that it will get introduced this year, I have no guarantees. I don't know what's on the agenda. But this is the step Tyrone is considering this evening, the same type of resolution to allow the property to be de-annexed through the General Assembly and into Peachtree City. And I think I put in the bottom of my memo, it would just be a motion to adopt the resolution that's in the council packet.
Can I get a motion? The answer would be so moved.
So moved.
Okay, good.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
New mayor, who seconded that?
Okay.
Thank you. New agenda item two twenty-three oh two, twenty twenty-three Municipal Election IGA.
Yes, Mayor. So this is, and council, this is a standard election contract that we receive every two years during election years from the actual Fayette County Elections Board. This is a continuation of the last resolution that was brought forth in which the Fayette County was, election superintendent was designated. And so we're just asking for council to approve this item.
Council?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. You know, there's an article in, in the AJC where Roswell agrees to election coalition. And there's been a lot of talk about it. I know that Milton has already approved it. Alpharetta, Roswell, Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, and others are looking at feasibility studies. And certainly, we're not going to do anything at all in terms of this municipal cycle. In my discussions with individuals up in Milton, you know, I really believe that there could be, big word, could, could be savings. I'd like to take some time to look at what they have. I have not seen their feasibility study, but if there are savings, I think that for the citizens of Peachtree City, for next election cycle, which is 2025, I would like to eventually look at that and bring it back. So what I like to say is that I agree with this now, but in the May-June timeframe, when it's appropriate, if we do have enough information, I would like to make a motion at the, to the council at that time for us to consider doing a feasibility study. Not nothing, nothing now. Again, not requesting any approval, but just a preliminary, if our preliminary indications indicate savings for the citizens, and I would like to bring it back in May or June for 2025. So nothing now, just a comment.
Any other comments?
No, ma'am.
So we, we did a little bit of homework as a city so far. Are we prepared to comment on that homework? Cost and
Well, the cost that we saw today, I think, was, what, thirty-seven thousand dollars per election?
Yeah.
At my concerns is, and I, and I agree At my concerns is, and I agree totally with what Frank is saying, is between now and November, we don't have the time to train the election staff. We certainly haven't thought through the security required for ballots, accounting and so forth, because, you know, that's a 24-hour-a-day process. And the worst thing we can do is mess it up to the point of we getting sued, and then you're going to end up, you know, with, like, I think it's the city that I heard about today, losing about $600,000 of cost. And we don't, we need to, if we go into this thing, we need to go into it with our eyes wide open. So I would agree with what Mr. Dastadia was saying on the far end.
Sure.
On down the road, look at it.
I've got some comments, too, to echo what's been said already. I made some calls to, to the people up at Milton and spoke at length in regards of what does it really take for that city, which is about our size, to do the work? And he said, Clint, 12 to 18 months. So we need to start it if we're going to be looking at the 2025, because it's not going to happen for the 2023 election. We need to maybe look at this as Mr. Dastadia said, maybe by this summer, we should at least start to look at doing a feasibility study. That may take us a year to get through.
But I really want to caution that we want to take a preliminary look at what numbers we have. And if it does not work out, we will not bring a motion to the table.
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
Fair enough. All right.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we accept. New agenda item, let me get my classes on here. 0220, 02-23-02, 2023 municipal election, IGA.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing item 22303, annual zoning map adoption.
Since this is a public hearing, I will read off the protocol. When the public hearing is open, members of the council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance. The mayor will then allow up to 10 minutes for speakers on each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council and will be divided equally by those supporting and those opposing the issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. The mayor and council are, when mayor and council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. Please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Keep individual remarks under five minutes. And do not repeat comments. Address all comments to the mayor. Thank you.
This is an item that we do every year. It is, under our city attorney believes it's a good legal practice to keep our zoning ordinance and map up to date and in good legal standing. So I'm here to answer any questions for you. There are absolutely no changes being made to the map that are through this process. This is the map that existed yesterday, is the map that is being adopted tonight. No changes to the ordinance either as part of this process.
Thank you. Counsel? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we accept.
Oh, sorry. I'm jumping ahead. Public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Can I get a show of hands of people who wish to speak in favor? Can I get a show of hands of people who wish to speak in opposition? Public hearing is still open. Does anybody want to make a comment? I hereby announce the public hearing is closed. Counsel?
I'd just like to make a comment that we've done this before. This map does not change anything. It's just a housecleaning map. I think Ted has made it clear that it's just good practice to bring it up every now and then, and we're not making any changes. So it's just bringing it up and making sure everybody knows what it is.
I will tell you, in representing cities in metro Atlanta, you'd be surprised how many times you get there and they can't remember when the last time they adopted their official zoning map. So the fact that we at least have a record of doing it typically every January or February is beneficial in the event we ever get into litigation about it.
Great. Thank you.
Nicely done.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve of the public hearing 22303, the annual zoning map adoption.
My second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council staff topics, CAR 8-6 Citizen Recognition Program.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. What you have in front of you this evening is what's known as a city administrative regulation for a CAR 8-6. This is in reference to the city recognition program, and it's a discussion item that I'd like to bring forward to council as it relates to the naming of city facilities and recognitions of cities or citizens' contributions to the city. So right now, our policy states that it is a general policy of the city that no city facility, park, field, or area be named after any person living or deceased. However, there have been facilities and amenities in the city that have been named after individuals. So my thinking this evening is to get a consensus from council if there is a desire to change the policy or the regulation to allow for amenity, city amenities, or city buildings and such to be named. And then we would come back at a future meeting with, you know, staff's recommendation as to what that would look like.
Comments?
I'll turn it over to counsel.
Counsel, you want to let, let staff take a look at that and make recommendations?
Yeah, I'd sure, certainly take a look at it. I, for one, don't particularly, I, recognition of private citizens' volunteer service to the city needs to be recognized.
Agreed.
And when you have exceptional folks that have done some exceptional things, that needs to at least come to council for some sort of recognition. I'm not saying what it is. It's kind of like when Frank, when you and I were in the military, some people deserve some very special recognition. And I think we have those citizens here. It's obvious, you know, the Fred wasn't named for the mayor without a good reason. And for that reason, I think we need to change that first statement as a general rule. I know it doesn't rule it out completely, but it can be better worded. That's all I'm saying.
My only, my only comment, if I could, Madam Mayor. You know, I think it would be best suited if it wasn't a political member, a politician.
Bingo.
That doesn't have to be, but that would be my preference. I would prefer it would be somebody that's passed away, but that's also not necessarily if the council agrees with that. But I agree with Mike. I certainly want to see individuals that are certainly involved in the city, civic organizations, people that were on the Chamber of Commerce and other things like that, American Legion or whatever. You know, I think anybody that serves recognition for what they've done for the city certainly deserves to be recognized. So, but I do like the fact that we're going to correct what the CAR says. I like to do things correct. And so I support making whatever changes to council this staff would recommend to us.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One of the things I heard kicked around was making it, and we might as well go ahead and get a tifter for it, where it'd have to be unanimous vote rather than a 3-2, you know, right? I mean, I don't know if that's something we'd all agree upon or not.
I certainly would, but, you know, that's just part of the thing when they put it together, when they bring it back, you know, we can say yes or no.
Okay.
I could support that, too, Phil.
I could, too.
Mr. Howard?
Only comment I had is, it was brought to, brought to my attention by the city manager, that having somebody living that is, you know, named, something named after in the city, and that person maybe finds out later on that's done something not quite, not quite right. And now we've got something named after somebody that maybe has done something wrong, maybe something criminal, something illegal, or whatever. So I'd, I'd be very careful on putting someone living on there. Not that they didn't deserve it, because they certainly may deserve it. It just makes me uneasy if something happens down the road. That's all. That's all.
That's your experience.
Let's, let's let staff, let's let staff do their job, and we'll bring it back, and thank you. That's, that's wonderful.
All I'm going to say is the purple hearts that I have now, I'm still glad I can see them.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yep.
Bob, what were you going to say? Didn't you have?
I was just going to say, I think, I think we've, staff has gleaned enough information from the conversation to come back with a document. That would be forthcoming of the conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel staff topics. Bob, anything else?
No, Mayor.
Counsel?
I have something, and it's going to be a surprise, and I apologize for doing that. But I saw on WSB last night on the news that the Brookhaven Police, when a call goes to 911, it goes directly to the, to the police car, like a new technology of some type. And so wondering if that's something that, you know, I guess we ought to maybe keep our eye on to see if our police have fired, if it would be of benefit to the citizens.
Certainly take a look at it.
Counsel, anything else?
I'd just like to give a shout out to the fire department. We had a great celebration, their awards banquet. Sandy and I really enjoyed coming there. Your master ceremonies was really fun. Your, your review of the year was also great. Wasn't as good as the mayor's review, but nevertheless, it was fun. Thank you for inviting us.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I've got a couple of items, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I've had what I would call ride-alongs. As a new council member, I've had ride-alongs with both the fire and police. And I want to let you know, I come from a family who's firemen and policemen. This is a professional group of people. The men and women that serve our city need a tip of the hat because they did, they do a very professional job. I was on some of the calls, so to speak, yesterday when I was out there, yeah, it was yesterday, and handled extremely professional. So a tip of the hat to them. Hopefully, that goes in the record. And the second thing I have, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I went to meet the Fayette County Development Authority with the mayor and the city manager. We met with the board members of the Fayette County Development Authority. That was Darrell Hicks and Nikki Van Der Slice. Is that how you pronounce her name?
Yes.
Really good. I mean, we had an excellent meeting, touched on a wide variety of things that included stuff here for Peachtree City. And we're still on the short list of things that the Development Authority is looking at for here in our city. So we should be grateful that we've got good people on that, on that, on that board. One personal note, though, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor. I was in my element. I love that stuff. That business development stuff was just what I had done for the last probably 25 years.